Good, good.
Congratulations.
You as well.
Um, I'm not aware of this call. We'll shut up. Postpone for the next meeting if you wanted the next meeting.
I know, but I kept asking. Listen, ma'am.
Good evening. Welcome, everyone. Would you please join me for the Pledge of Stand and put the pledge allegiance and remain standing at the invocation?
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're honored to have Mr. Leonard Akers lead Pastor for Liberty Hill Church to give us our invocation this evening.
Let us pray. Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you so much for the gift and blessing that you have chosen to place us in this community during this amazing season that we're in. We are grateful beyond words to be a part of all the good work that is taking place in our community right now. I pray, Lord, for the people that will be speaking and presenting this evening. I pray especially for those folks who aren't so confident and sure of what it means to speak in front of others. I pray that you would give them peace and confidence so that they might be able to articulate well their position and what they need to present this evening. I pray, Lord, for the council members. We are grateful beyond words for their willingness to serve us and our community. Please give them wisdom and discernment. I pray that if at all possible, Lord, they would be as one on most of the issues, especially the big ones, so that they can really do well by our community. And for those issues and things that they are not unified on, I pray for patience and wisdom and discernment so that they eventually come together and do what is best for our community. But thank you, Lord, for them and their willingness to serve. We thank you, Lord, most of all for your care for us, for your love for us, and especially your love for us when we forget how to love one another well. We pray all of these things in Jesus' holy and precious name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Akers. I have to call to order our meeting of August 19th, 2021. With consideration to approve the agenda, do we have any changes or revisions? Mr. Peppers.
We did receive a request from the applicant for the project at Hospital Road. That's master plan 2106-004, rezoning 2106-003, 2106-005, asking to have that matter tabled until September 2nd so that they can have further discussion about some of the conditions that were discussed at the last meeting.
Is that old business item D? Is that correct? We'll remove that from the agenda. Any further changes, revisions? Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All members voted for the motion. Tonight, we have a couple of guests and visitors, beginning with a proclamation this evening for Mr. William Walt Townsend. And I will read that, and if, when I'm finished, if Mr. Townsend could join me at the podium for, to receive the proclamation. The City of Canton proclamation number 20210819. Whereas the mayor of the City of Canton does hereby recognize William Walt Townsend for his contributions to our community. And whereas William Walt Townsend has completed the requirements, has been examined by Eagle Scout Board of Review, has been found worthy of the rank of Eagle Scout and is being honored at an Eagle Scout Court of Honor on Saturday, August 21st, 2021. And whereas William Walt Townsend is a member of Boy Scout Troop 241 that meets at McCandless Park on Mural Street in downtown Canton, Walt is an active member in troop events and has over 55 hours of community service. And whereas Walt led a drive to collect coloring books and supplies for children at a local hospital in addition to serving his troop as a chaplain's aide, patrol leader, and scribe. Walt has completed a total of 28 merit badges, seven more than required, than the required 21, while introducing scouting to his friends and earning the recruiter path. Walt has earned a National Outdoor Award for camping and has completed 45 nights of camping. And whereas Walt has completed the prerequisites for and is part of his continued commitment to scouting, will attend National Youth Leadership Training in December 2021. Walt lives by the scout oath, scout law, and outdoor code in all aspects of his life. And whereas Walt completed his Eagle Scout project by leading fellow scouts and adults in the building and installing of Native American bee boxes in the Dawsonville Wildlife Management Area. These boxes will serve as home to native pollinators for years to come. Now, therefore, the mayor of the City of Canton does hereby congratulate Walt Townsend for completing his Eagle Scout leadership project and for being honored at the Eagle Scout Court of Honor on August 21st, 2021, and encourages him to continue his commitment and dedication to the community. Walt, you joined up front? Congratulations again, Walt. Second this evening, we have a life-saving award presented by Chief Mayor Phil.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. A few weeks ago, I was here on a life-saving award for some of our officers that went into some burning houses and assisted some people. Sergeant Lilly had the tough decision of either going to Disneyland with his daughter or coming to council meeting, and he chose Disneyland with his daughter, rightfully so. But it was such an important event and what these officers did, I wanted to make sure that we did get him in front of council and our citizenry to talk about that evening. That was back in June at the Hidden Creek subdivision. We've played the videos on our social media. If you haven't seen it, it's pretty amazing to watch as our officers are going into these smoke-filled houses, assisting citizens out, assisting pets out. When we did this a few weeks ago, I didn't realize that most of the people here were actually residents of that subdivision that had come for our officers. And after we did the award here and we walked outside, they all came up to the officers to thank them. They'd made gifts for them. And one young lady was here because two of our officers actually carried a very large dog of hers down the stairs and outside. So not only was Sergeant Lilly part of that rescue of our citizens, but he was the supervisor out there. So his leadership with his officers and he leading from the front by going, if you watch the video, he's the one leading going into the houses. And he and another officer actually helped carry an elderly person down the steep stairway and out. So because of his actions on that night, he has been awarded the Canton Police Department Life Saving Award. And in reading the recommendation from Lieutenant Campbell, it says, "These officers," I'm sorry, "these officers acted without concern for their own safety or well-being, without delay to protect those in danger by assisting in their safe removal from the area." I'd like to thank Sergeant Lilly for his courage and for his leadership.
Thank you, Officer Lilly, and congratulations on your award. Well deserved.
Thank you.
At this point, we'll have consideration to approve the minutes in your package. You have the council meeting draft minutes from August 4th, 2021 meeting. Any revisions, changes, alterations, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye. All members voted for the motion. Informational items this evening, we have Chief Mayor Phil here to give us our uniform crime report. Welcome back, Chief.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. The, the, the crime report covers the first seven months of 2021. Some of the notables are total violent crime is down 17%. The total property crimes are up 4%, and our total Part 1 crimes, all crimes together, are up 2%. I met with our crime analyst and a couple of our commanders the other day to say, "Why, why are we up 2%?" But once it was explained to me, it made perfect sense. We're up 2% from where we were in 2020 in July through the lockdowns, which those numbers, our crime numbers then, were probably historically low. And when thinking of that, it's pretty amazing we're not more, a greater percentage up than where we were. And again, also, as I've explained several times, we're very fortunate here that our numbers are so low that, for instance, on this one, it's five incident differences, and that causes a 2% raise. But to further discuss about how the increase is coming, if you look at our total calls for service, we're up 44% from where we were last year. Over 5,000 more calls for service than we were last year. Our traffic citations are up 63% because during the lockdown, our officers were not doing a lot of self-initiated activity. Obviously, the, the, the traffic stops that were dangerous needed to be made, but our officers, in order to not endanger the citizens and not endanger our officers, had cut down way, way down on their self-initiated. Total warnings are up 139% than where they were last year. And our total contacts are up 60% from where they were last year, almost 2,000, I'm sorry, almost 3,000 more than what we were last year. So we are seeing it, as the lockdowns have ended, that we're starting to come back with the numbers of our calls. We're starting to come back with the numbers, unfortunately, with our crimes because people are out and about. Does anyone have any questions on our crime report?
Any questions for the chief? Thank you, chief, and appreciate the explanation as well.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Any other announcements this evening? Now, when we move into our 10-minute public input, we have one citizen signed up, Mr. Thomas Weaver.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Thomas Weaver. I reside at 131 Old Mary. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for recognizing me to speak. As I trust many of you are aware, and maybe some who, well, Ms. Wilson's not here, but I would like to request that council consider the universal view of all of our ordinances, in particular, the ordinance that I had mentioned in my writings this past month. I know that there are many different ordinances that have to be considered, and I know that there are many different things that are more important. However, I do ask that council not lose sight of that goal moving forward, which I do believe is part of your stated road plan. Secondly, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I did notice that later on tonight's agenda, under the council will be considering the abolition of an unincorporated island for the annexation of two acres on behalf of the school district for their 88-acre site there that's encapsulated by Riverstone Parkway, Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, and Bluffs Parkway. I do ask that this potential council action that's currently on your agenda, that you agreed to, lends credence to what I had approached you about much earlier this year in this past winter, when I had asked that this matter be agenda incorporation by council of a legislative act to cite that school safety zone map that I had asked. At the time, I believe that your attorney advised you that it would be premature to adopt the school safety zone map because the Cherokee County School District had not yet voted to place a high school on that property. However, I do think that the council's potential action tonight, and at least consideration of that matter, again, lends credence to the, to my request that I had placed much earlier in the year, and I do that if council should find it appropriate that I be given leeway to present that again at some point after this has reached its potential conclusion, based on what council chooses to decide. Plus, getting rid of those unincorporated islands is always a good thing. Now, as I have jokingly remarked in the past, I try to keep on the sunny side in literal and figurative sense during the summer, but the rains came. But I'm going to stay on the sunny side all the same. Thank you for allowing me to speak, Mr. Mayor, members of council, and I look forward to being able to address additional issues as we continue to move forward.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver. Moving into old business, beginning with item A, discussion and possible action on case CUP 1910-001 for Great Sky, Pod 16. Mr. Patton or Mr. Dyer?
I'll be handling this one. So this is just, we had the public hearing for this two weeks ago. We've discussed it many times, so it's before you for action. I circulated a proposed list of conditions that is my understanding that the applicant has agreed to. They are primarily the ones that Mr. Carlin had talked about at the meeting two weeks ago. So I'm happy to answer any questions otherwise, but it is, it is before you for a decision.
Okay, thank you. I've not done this often, or if ever, but I'd like to take a moment to put this matter into context from my perspective, the mayor's perspective, if you'll indulge me for, for a couple of moments. I served on council both when the CUP process was implemented and when it was denied for Pod 16. One of the primary reasons the previous council implemented the CUP process was because developments that had mixture, a mixture of residential units were not actively working on multifamily options at the beginning of projects until a significant level of semi, single-family homes had been constructed and sold. This left homeowners in these master plan communities unaware of what was to come in their own neighborhoods. Additionally, in Great Sky, where the development plans are now 20 years old, it's difficult to see how many, how multifamily is just now an option for construction if it was truly a part of the original plan. I also think it's extremely important to note that the CUP process was implemented and in place before Mr. Frame closed on this property, and our city staff made him aware of the CUP process prior to that closing. Now the developer wants to challenge the process after knowingly purchasing the property with the CUP restrictions. Our CUP process was implemented because our current and most recent council had little to no control over outdated master plans that were created and approved over 20 years ago. These plans anticipated a major northern arc or outer perimeter through our city that excited developers and major property owners along its path. We just have to travel a few miles down to 285 to understand the density that was anticipated in these master plans, and that included a cornucopia of every possible commercial and residential application that may be profitable when the highways, highway was built. Fast forward 20 years, and our city has developed in a drastically different manner. There's no massive outer perimeter bisect our community. We now have a beautiful reservoir and a 411-acre lake that are, that we are planning to enhance for all citizens to enjoy with new recreational opportunities. We also now have a roadmap for success that not only guides our growth and development for years to come, but is also a declaration of our citizens' priorities, a blueprint of how they want our cities to develop. Our roadmap is also a blueprint for our development partners. A clear guide is how they can help us build the Canton that we all want and hope to enjoy for many years to come. Most developers have welcomed our roadmap and our goal to create the coolest small town in America, and they seek to invest in our plan because it will generate the best return for everyone, our residents, the city, and yes, even our developers, because we are collectively pursuing quality over quantity, create a more valuable and desirable community. I would also like to remind council the most recent case in which Landover and Venture Homes sought a CUP to construct townhomes in Pod 18 in Great Sky in June 2019. After a lot of conversations and tremendous amount of citizen input, council approved the CUP with some very definitive conditions that the developer agreed to follow. Developer promised attached townhomes that were much higher quality than the ones that would have, than the most, than the ones that would have appearance of single-family homes with great landscaping, and they would also maintain the natural beauty of the pod. After getting approval with these conditions, however, the developer reverted back to standard duplex units that were approved as part of the original master plan, and they proceeded to clearcut the property and build a much different product than they promised to council, Great Sky residents, and the citizens of Canton. Why? Because they could, and the city had no legal recourse. Last but certainly not least, I believe it is our job as elected officials to represent the best interests of our citizens. That does not imply that our citizens are always right on every fact or even formally, fully informed of the citizens' overall development strategy. It simply means they deserve to be heard and most of all, represented. It is clear to me where the vast majority of our citizens stand on this issue and how they want to see our city to develop, especially in Ward 1, where we've seen the majority of multifamily and other residential development in the past few years. As always, I will respect and support our council's decisions on this matter, but I stand firmly on the side of our citizen and our citizens and our city's ability to control our own destiny when it comes to how we want Canton to develop. That was our goal with the roadmap, to get in front of development so we can guide it proactively instead of reacting to every single project or threat of litigation. Shortly after I was first elected to council, we visited a nearby city that was dealing with similar growth and development issues. When asked what they thought was the most important thing when it came to quality and sustainable growth, their city manager replied with two simple words, "political will." Do we have the political will and confidence to represent our citizens, fight for the integrity of our CUP process, and control how our city develops? Or do we try to anticipate how a judge may or may not rule in a, in a potential case, how developer may or may not respond, and default to the constraints of an outdated, misguided, and obsolete master plan from over 20 years ago? In my opinion, the choice is clear. Thank you. And I will open the matter up for further discussions. Mr. S.
I'd just say, thank you. That's a lot more eloquently than I would have said it. But, you know, the, I think, you know, to echo your point, I think two things continue to stick in my head. One is, I don't believe that Ward 1 needs density like what is being proposed. And, and then most importantly, you know, I really appreciate the feedback that we've received over the last several weeks. And, and again, that makes it a pretty easy decision from my standpoint to say, you know, as representatives of our citizens, what their passion and desires are, has been communicated very clearly. So, so thank you for those words, and again, much more eloquently than, than I would have said.
Further discussion, comments? Mr. McGee?
Thank you. I concur with everything you said. The emails I received and information, the texts, were overwhelmingly opposed to the apartments. There were a handful that were agreeable to it. I've said all along that Ward 1 is full. We don't need any more high-density homes. I don't think this is a very good use of waterfront property. I think that there, there could be something innovative, unique, different, thinking way out of the box, to bring the community together, all of the community, all of Great Sky, Laurel Canyon, something that everyone can use and enjoy. I, I don't think that apartments are what we need. I think we need a complex over by the new hospital, maybe in River Green, but not in Ward 1, thank you. And I may have more later.
Thank you. Further comments? Mr. Carlin?
First, I think we're missing somebody today, and I know she wanted to be heard and be heard. So it's my recommendation that it's postponed until Ms. Wilson can be here. We have a full council. This is occurring in her ward, and it's something that I think she, she feels passionately about as well. The, as far as your comments, Mr. Mayor, the, I appreciate that the, the volume of emails that we received, and I applaud the efforts to get them in. At the end of the day, I feel like this is going to be a residential apartment complex in this area. Right now, if we go to court and we lose, it is a restricted access to the reservoir. It is 1,025 garden-style apartments, and the city would no recourse to do anything about it. Mr. Mayor, in your comments, you made a comment that you wanted to see city council guide this. You wanted to see it be creative. You want to see us find ways to make sure that everyone's served, and I don't see a closed-door complex being that solution. Of the concerns that were raised by citizens, number one concern was certainly traffic, and I applaud that, and it's certainly a good point. I think later this meeting, we're going to hear more conversation about traffic signals on Reservoir Drive and at Reservoir and Reinhardt College. The traffic is a four-lane divided road. I don't know where else you would, what other road we could possibly put it on, outside of somewhere near the Bluffs with, where it's seven lanes wide across from the post office. The, that there'd be a signal there, and someone might wait for two cycles. I don't think it's a reason to, to turn down a project that is as inclusive as this one, with diversity of housing, with density, which this council has passed a roadmap saying they want affordable housing. They want more price points that are lower. The only way to do that is to increase the housing numbers. You increase supply, and the price will go down. So I don't see the numbers or the transportation as being the hurdle here. I understand the feeling that Ward 1 is full. I don't feel this is even a Great Sky property since it's outside the monument. But at the end of the day, Ward 1, years ago, was decided that's where the commercial hub of North Canton is going to be. It's going to be there. It makes sense from a crime perspective, from a property value perspective, to put multifamily closer to those areas because it will keep those issues in check. And that's, this is the exact place for something like that, that the council decided to move the 1,025 apartments out of Great Sky, agreed to move them in a master plan to the reservoir in 16, and then turn around and deny that same request. Certainly, we know more now. I'm not a fan of the 1,025 garden-style apartments. I want us to find a better way to use that land. I think the applicant has heard the concerns of this council. They've developed something that looks better than garden-style apartments. They've created amenities. They've created a, a restaurant brewery concept, whatever that will be. Something that's going to serve more than just the residents within the apartment complex. I think the developer's been responsive to the requests of this city. I think they've been responsive to the roadmap and to the housing study. I believe this is where, this is the best opportunity the city is going to have to direct this development. And I think that we, if there's something we want to do to tweak it, we've got a couple of more weeks. If we, if this council agrees to postpone it until Ms. Wilson can be here and be heard, then we've got a couple more weeks to talk about things. I'll mention to Mr. Dyer, the one concern from the email that we received that was interesting, that I don't know the answer to, would be there was a question about whether or not the, because there is public access to the reservoir, what kind of public parking would be available. Something I don't know that anybody's prepared to answer right now, but I thought that was a, an insightful email. I don't know what else we would possibly ask of a developer to do for us, to put, to, to satisfy all the things that we say we want. satisfy all the things that we say we want, to follow the roadmap, to make it the best use of this, this area. I applaud, sure, I'd love for it to be a hotel conference center. That's not what's on the table. If it was good for that, it would be that. I don't see that being, that's not something we can force somebody to do, that you want to place it somewhere else. That's not up to us. This landowner, if we're property rights folks, this landowner has right to use his land the way that they want to use it, that we're here to say, we can, want you to use it, but we want it to fit our city. That's what we're here to do. That's what they've offered. If we say no to this and we deny it, then we lose any kind of control over that, and even if we go to court and win, this is what, they will bring back another apartment complex for this pod, because that's what makes sense. It's also what this master plan out to have. That's what we've highest used of this property. So I would encourage us to consider that. I will hear from everybody else, but I anticipate making a motion to postpone this until Ms. Wilson can be here in two weeks, since it is occurring in her ward. It has generated a lot of email traffic, and I will make sure that she has that opportunity as well.
Okay, I appreciate that. I respect and appreciate your comments. Couple responses, I think that we're making assumptions that if we did go to court or continue the court case, that we would lose. That's, I think that's one assumption, when our attorney told us we've had a strong case all along, and then if we did lose, that the developer would build, you know, 1,025 garden-style apartments instead of the, you know, the, the nice plans that they have shown us. I'm, I would hope that they would still build that nice plan on waterfront property, because they could get more, higher rents out of that, but we haven't been told that they would build that. So I think we're making a lot of, lot of assumptions, you know, acting on those instead of acting on what we, what we know, and there are a lot of unknowns in, in the equation. I think the developer, you know, did come back with a revised plan, and I think we all appreciated that. I think we, we liked the plan, you know, as it is, you know, and I have heard others say, you know, if it was somewhere else that, you know, we would, would like it better. You know, I've said all along that, you know, I'm personally not a, and I said when we, you know, impose the CUP process, that I'm not opposed to apartments, but it gave us an opportunity to, to look at our city inside, you know, where were they appropriate and, and where they were located in the city. I think it also gave us a chance to have some control over these outdated master plans. So I agree that the, you know, the, the developer has, you know, has worked with us, worked with us to a great extent. However, when I, you know, received these conditions this, this afternoon, it gave me even greater concern to, you know, see some of the language about the, the traffic signal, you know, you know, if, when it's approved, you know, it would contribute to that. The pedestrian, pedestrian crossings on Reservoir Drive, if approved, multifamily buildings will be constructed in the general architectural style. And if approved, the Georgia Environmental Protection Division by the, in Georgia Environmental Protection Division applicant will install the trails on the property. We all, we all know how the EPP operates, and, and the plan will include land for a restaurant brewery or event space in a location. So it's not saying that they're going to build a restaurant or brewery. So I find these, the intent of these conditions to be good, but I find the language to be totally, you know, really kind of, kind of worthless with all the, with this ifs and, you know, when, and, and possibilities and, you know, generalities in there. So that, that just gives me more concern based on, you know, these conditions that are, in my opinion, I read them as pretty wide open. And so it just gave me more concern rather than giving me more confidence. Ms. McGrew?
I don't know, the, I'll tell you, as, I mean, you know my profession.
Could you speak into your mic, please?
You know my profession and my, what I do, and I'm not concerned about these, the language here. Of course, it's going to say if approved. Of course, it's going to say, because you don't want it built if it's not approved by someone. I feel like you grasped me in some straws here to try to find a reason not to do it, but I hear you. If we go back, sounds like if we take this for two more weeks, if we go back and tighten this language up, would that satisfy the concern?
Would satisfy the concern on these conditions.
And then can we get your support at that point?
But I'm, I'm here to represent the, the citizens, and, and my profession is to represent the citizens, so.
I don't have anything to add to what Mr. Carlin said, except that the idea that pausing and saying that there is a risk to the future development of the city if we go to court, and weighing the risk of the burden hand, or what might happen, and no one knows, if we go to court, does not mean that anyone on this council is not representing their residents or doing their job. I just want to be clear on that. To me, looking at that risk and measuring it differently as someone else, than someone else, simply means that maybe a garden-style apartment complex that limits who can get to the reservoir is not the best thing for Canton now, 15 years from now, 30 years from now. That is representing the best interests of all the residents, not just the residents of one neighborhood. So I just, I want to be clear on that. I also believe that my job is to represent the citizens, and I believe that I'm doing that to the best of my ability, and I think that everyone on council is doing that. As far as traffic, I don't know, other than Northside, where there are four and six-lane roads in Canton. People say, oh, put them out in South Canton where all the roads are too lame. I mean, and this developer doesn't own that land, so it's not like he, it's not like this developer can pick up this plan and put it somewhere else. That would be amazing, but that's not a possibility. That's just a wish that a lot of people have. So there was concern about language and the conditions, and to echo what Mr. Carlin said, Joellen isn't here, so I would support waiting to make a decision.
Definitely. Thank you, and, and I certainly do not intend to imply that no one's representing their citizens, so, to be clear, so. And, and also, we can certainly have differences of opinion on this and other matters and, and discuss it civilly, and, and, and I respect everyone's opinions, so I'll make that very clear for, for citizens and for my, my colleagues up here.
This is fun. I can't imagine why nobody else decided to run for city council.
You figure that, huh? But, and I, and I'm, and I'm totally, if council decides to postpone the next meeting, I'm fine. I think the more information we have, the more, you know, the better, in, in all these instances. And, and I'm also saying there's not a risk if we, you know, if, if we deny this, and we don't, and we, you know, we go to court, you never can, you know, you can't predict what the courts will do, even though we've been told we have a strong case. But I also saw a lot of the, the residents say that they were okay with that risk. I wouldn't be saying, hey, I'm going to take the risk for you, but without that, so. I did have one question on the restaurant. I don't know if this is for Mr. Dyer, Mr. Peppers, or Mr. Patton, but it, looking at the, the plans and the map and the location, proposed location of the restaurant, is that, I think in Georgia code that you cannot have, can, I think you can't serve alcohol within 300 feet of a church? Is that Georgia code? And is that, looking at that location, it looks very close to me, so.
That would have to be addressed, yes, whatever the distance requirements are. Now, we, I think, did we not eliminate distance requirements for pouring? The state does not regulate distance for restaurants from anything, and I don't remember, I thought we changed that.
I think we went to the, the basic estate minimums, which I thought was 300 feet.
It is for distilled spirits.
For distilled spirits. They can serve beer and wine, but not...
Well, or packaged stores. So the state does not regulate distance from pouring licensed restaurants, and I just, I don't remember what we did. I know we talked about it.
For beer or wine, but...
No, even, even liquor restaurants. The state does not have a distance requirement for restaurants.
Okay.
Serving liquor even, distilled spirits. But all of those would have to be met, whatever they are, they would have to be met, and so the placement of that building would, would be a part of that.
Okay, so there's no requirements, but if there were, they'd have to be met?
No, that whatever our distance requirements for alcohol, and if there was a restaurant serving alcohol, they'd have to be met.
Okay.
I, I just don't, I have to refresh my memory of what we did earlier this year.
I thought it was 300 square feet, but I may be wrong on that.
There are 300 feet distance requirements for many things.
Yeah.
And we adopted the state, the state just doesn't have anything for pouring, and I can't remember if we eliminated what we had or not.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I think you may be thinking of, like, a brewery to, like, be a manufacturer of it. I think that's the 300 feet.
Well, the, the state doesn't actually, beer and wine is different. Package stores are about the only thing the state regulates.
See Mr. Pat, Patton holding his finger up.
Our local alcohol chapter does have a distance limitations contained within it. It does address 300 feet from church property for distilled spirits. It does not address anything in regards to something less than 24% by content alcohol, such as brewery or wine, that sort of thing. Don't recall if there's a specific exemption on by the drink, for instance, restaurant. 300 feet is the distance, and they would have to comply with that.
Okay, thank you.
Is it as the crow flies or road? Is it as the crow flies?
From property line.
Okay.
Is what the local ordinance specifies.
Yeah, thank you for the clarification there, so.
I did have one, I guess, a comment or two to make real quickly.
Certainly.
And I'll, at the expense of getting throat punched by Ms. McGrew, I'll move my microphone a little closer. I appreciate your comments, Mayor. I appreciate the other folks' comments. This council is very passionate about a lot of things, and this has been a project that's been, you know, it's been in our minds now for, what, 18, 19 months. When we first saw the original iteration, I did not like it at all. I don't know anybody on this council that liked it at all. In fact, I hated it. I, I just thought it was not what the city needed, and I get that, I get the notion that, that Ward 1 is full. I've heard that a bunch now, and, but I, I have to give credit to the developer, because they have listened to us, and they have come back, and they've come up with some really creative solutions. They've pushed down the number of, of apartments. They're adding in, you know, some different housing types, which, which adds to the attractiveness of it. They're addressing, you know, addressing crosswalks, they're addressing signalization of lights. They've addressed, I think, everything that we've asked for. Sure, there's some language that needs to be tightened up, and I think in, in legal speak, that is something that always happens, but I, I go back, and I'm, I'm not hanging my decision, or nor will I hang my decision based on fear of a loss, but I have to go back to several emails that I read from Great Sky residents that pointed to what the developer had promised in certain pods within Great Sky and what actually transpired. And for me, and I'm, I'm just echoing what I think I heard them say, there is a serious trust factor there. So, yeah, I would hope that if we, if this were to go to litigation and we were to lose, I would hope that they wouldn't put 1,025 in there, 1,025 apartments. I would hope that they would be nicer, but as we all know, hope is not a plan. We have a plan now, and I like this plan a heck of a lot better than any plan I've seen since I've joined council, and even the months preceding to me joining council. So I just want to mention those words.
Thank you. Ms. McGrew?
I'm curious, if this project goes through, is Landover selling the property to a different developer, or would the residents be dealing with Landover?
Mr. Dyer, can you address that?
I believe that the presentations were made by an apartment developer, so presumably he's selling the land to that apartment developer.
Can we find that out for sure?
I'm, I'm pretty sure of that. Yes, because Mr. Sands was a different company.
Can we get customer reviews from that developer?
Suppose we could request those? I'm sure Mr. Patton could maybe look into that. Ms. McGrew asked if we could possibly get some reviews, customer reviews from the developer that was purchasing the property.
We can certainly look at it. I believe that I can already have a PowerPoint the developer presented in some meetings earlier that reflects some of the projects that they have done in other parts of metro Atlanta. Can follow up with that if council does table this matter.
Thank you.
I would just note that the, the code was changed, and there's a specific line in there that says that distance requirements related to on-premises consumption don't exist, so they would be able to sell any kind of alcohol at that particular restaurant as long as it was pouring.
Thank you. It's changed a lot, so it's been confusing, so it's good to know. We've had discussions, the possibility of the motion being made?
Might be. I gotta decide which one I want to do. I mean, I certainly think there's support for this, and, but Ms. Wilson did ask for us to, well, I think she is enthusiastic as well, and she asked for the courtesy of being allowed to be here for the vote, and so I will defer to her on that. So I'd make the motion to postpone a final decision on this until our next council meeting. I'm sorry if I have everyone there.
A motion and a second, and further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Aye.
All members voted for the motion except for Mr. Estes, is that correct? Okay. Well, item B, discussion and possible action on case CUP 2105-012 for John Lloyd requesting conditional use parent approval to develop a 156-town home project located at 1010 Marietta Road. Mr. Patton?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, council members. A public hearing was conducted on this at the last city council meeting. One of the council members asked staff to reach out to the applicant developer in regards to a reduction of the number of units. We did email out a response from the applicant, in which they indicated they would remove two units and create an additional pocket park besides the amenity center that is proposed with this project. The staff does recommend approval. This is a reduction of the total number of units from multiple-family apartments to townhomes. That reduction of total number of units is 68, plus the two units that the applicant agreed to reduce. I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Patton, on the, in your report, Department of Support, it says RM50s, 50-foot buffer bill required along the perimeter of the property, and it said the submitted site plan does not show this required buffer, and if approved, the applicant may have to adjust the site plan for variance?
That is correct. The Unified Development Code does specify a 50-foot buffer adjacent to unincorporated properties and a buffer between different zoning districts... and a buffer between different zoning district types. The Unified Development Code with that buffer does not specify that that buffer shall be or stay as undisturbed. It does allow for disturbance within that fifty-foot buffer and they do have to replant. But yes, they potentially would have to alter their site plan slightly. I thought there was an amended site plan in the package that did reflect fifty-foot buffer line that showed all of the units roadway parking was outside of that fifty-foot buffer. It did show a detention pond within that and that would have to be addressed.
Okay, so I just want to confirm that. So if that were to be made a condition of approval, then the revised plans are showing that, would that be necessary or would that be something?
Wouldn't necessarily have to be a condition of approval because the Unified Development Code already has specific language about the buffer requirements between the zoning districts and that sort of thing.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
One question, Mr. Mayor. In the packet, in our council packet, it seems like that hundred and fifty-six number has been the number for about a month or so now. So is that now down to one fifty-four?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
And if council did want to have a condition, if they're inclined to approve this, they could make a condition maximum one hundred and fifty-four units. But there was that stipulation letter that is part of the package in our files and which the developer applicant agreed to reduce those two units.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Estes?
I think this is a great example of, you know, putting some density in, you know, different parts of the wards that need it. And so the, does the motion have to stipulate that condition of reducing two?
That is up to.
No, I'm saying, but if, without that, it would just go through as presented with one hundred and fifty-six.
Correct.
I always struggle when non-developers kind of dictate to developers what to do. So, you know, two is interesting, but I don't know, it seemed like there was a lot of, no offense, right, it was yours. Yeah, no offense. When you say that, I guess you mean offense, but I, yeah, I thought, I don't know, personally I thought there was enough green space there. Can you, sorry, I'm having a hard time finding the recommended conditions that were.
There were no recommended conditions or suggested conditions from the staff.
Okay, thank you, outside of what we just discussed. And I would make a motion to approve the CUP four hundred and fifty-six townhomes.
A motion, is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second?
I'll make a different motion.
Okay.
I move to approve with a maximum number of one hundred and fifty-four.
Okay.
Second.
A motion and a second? Further discussion?
I did have one point to make, Mr. Mayor. This is a great example. This started, this project started at, what, two hundred and fifty apartments? And now it is one hundred and fifty-four fee simple townhomes. And we don't have very many of those in the city. So I think this is a message to developers that this is a good thing for Canton. And I'm thrilled that we're talking about it tonight and support it wholeheartedly.
Thank you. I agree, and I think it's, I think it's a message to developers also that the market's out there for fee simple townhomes and condos and demands there. So I think it's a positive development also, so. Further discussion?
Well, I'd like to ask Mr. Patton or Mr. Huff to convey my thanks to the developer for considering and agreeing to reduce the number of units to give the community a little pocket to gather in. Thank you.
Mr. Patton, I'm assuming also that this will carry the conditional, the original, I forget what we did on the original apartments as far as the sewer capacity. Was it land disturbance could not happen until capacity was available or?
Until capacity is available, yes, sir.
So that.
That is.
That carries over to?
City Council did adopt a policy in regards to our wastewater treatment and sanitary sewer capacity in which the applicant has to submit a letter. Utility engineer responds back as to whether sewer is available or not. The responses have been sewer is not available until 2023.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? A motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? All members voted for the motion. Move along, we have item C, discussion and possible action on cases ZCA two one zero six dash zero zero two and CUP two one zero six dash zero zero one for JW Collection LLC requesting zoning condition amendment and a conditional use permit approval to develop fifty-five town home units, twelve condominium flats and eighteen thousand square feet of commercial office space at two hundred River Green Avenue. Mr. Patton?
Yes, sir, that is correct in regards to the application proposal. Public hearing was held by council two weeks ago. Staff does recommend approval of this proposal. Some conditions that staff suggest city council consider. Number one, what staff would call the first curb cut entrance, the one closest to Highway twenty. And the third entrance going from Highway twenty inside River Green. Those two curb cuts entrances, ride in, ride out only. The divided median and there is a crosswalk, if you will, and access to that first curb cut entrance closest to Highway twenty. Condition number two, the divided median shall be extended to close up any possibility of left turn action, if you will, coincide with ride in, ride out only. That would provide an additional fifty-five to sixty lineal feet of left turn action from River Green onto Highway twenty. Third suggested condition, there should be a fifty-foot buffer along the perimeter of the property where the butts unincorporated Cherokee County. This buffer be landscape, provide opaque screen of budding properties. This could be reduced through a variance application. As with the previous case, if staff does, if council does not want to include this, the Unified Development Code does have standards in place as it relates to buffers and what can and can't be done within that. The fourth suggested condition, landscape material on Knox Bridge Highway, River Green Avenue installed during the initial development be retained. The applicant has raised concerns with that proposed condition. There has been discussions in regards to removing River Green Avenue from that suggested condition. Some other staff members with JW Collection have concerns about some of the landscaping along Knox Bridge Highway and it affecting the developability of the commercial pods, but those are suggested conditions.
Discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Patton. When the median gets extended, the developer would be responsible for landscaping in that median and then the HOA would take over the maintenance of that?
Would assume so, yes.
Is it an oversight committee issue or would it need to be a condition where we discuss that any market convenience store coffee concept would also be walkable and not just a drive-through?
If you don't want any of it to have a drive-through, you would add a condition that none of the office retail buildings shall have a drive-through?
Not necessarily eliminating the drive-through, just making sure you can also walk to it and walk into it.
We require sidewalks on all projects by our Unified Development Code. They'll have to install sidewalks. There's already existing sidewalks that would tie to the sidewalks along River Green Avenue with this project.
Okay.
I think what you're saying is you want to make a condition that it also has any retail without walking.
Yes, like a door that you go in.
That's not. That's not drive-through only, right?
Right, okay. And then would it only be an oversight committee issue to make sure that the commercial buildings have that cottage style architecture instead of the plain office?
Yes, oversight committee and there's, within the application file, their letter of intent. They did include some architectural renderings of what the commercial buildings would look like. That was even presented during the public hearing two weeks ago. It's oversight's responsibility to follow up, make sure that's what gets built and developed, if you will.
Would it be a condition or an oversight committee issue to make sure that the street lighting matches what's already in River Green?
You could make that a condition of approval that it matches. I would tend to think the developer would want to do that anyway, but just to ensure that that does occur, that could be an additional condition.
Okay. The condominiums, I looked at the budget. I wanted to clarify where the seventy-five hundred dollar beginning balance in the reserves comes from.
I would assume that the developer is going to put money in the kitty, so to speak, on the front end prior to development.
Just wanted to make sure of that. Based on the email we received from the developer and a couple of other issues that came up with staff, I do tend to feel favorable to this project, but I would like to, after further discussion, probably move to postpone to our first meeting in September so we can work out a couple more issues.
So a motion, is there a second?
A second, if it's a motion.
I was saying, I was gonna be emotional, but I didn't know if anybody else wanted to talk first.
So further discussion?
Yeah, just for further discussion, the, I guess, my commentary would be, you know, I would definitely be in favor of, you know, that screening or landscaping on the River Green Ave. I do think it would be positive to see that and actually I don't know how it would work. You know, you're gonna have like cars parking on River Green Ave and then climbing through the forest to get to other stuff potentially.
Right, that's the issue.
So I think that's, that is a positive that was brought back to us. And then the lighting, I don't know if I would, if I recall, like my lighting in my newer part of the neighborhood is much better and much brighter. And I think the new standard, whereas some of the other lighting in River Green is pretty old and orangey, but I don't recall what's on River Green Ave, so.
Well, what I just meant, that's what I meant, like condition it to match what's in the retreat.
Okay, got it.
Condition it not be orangey, I guess.
Yes, that's a technical term.
New word.
Is that it?
Yep.
Further discussion? Motion?
So I move to postpone until our first meeting in September.
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? All members voted for the motion. Item D was postponed, so move to item E, discussion of reservoir drive intersection improvement update. Ms. Watson?
Thank you, Mayor. So as you probably remember, a few months ago, we had Atkins start a traffic study on Reservoir Drive and Reinhardt College Parkway and Reservoir Drive and Hickory Log Drive. We have received that traffic study back and currently there are not warrants for either one of the lights. They did look at future conditions and there is a warrant for the light at Reservoir Drive and Reinhardt College Parkway. GDOT is currently reviewing, they've sent some comments back. Atkins is going through that now and then we'll be able to start the process of getting our traffic signal light, I mean, traffic signal permit from GDOT in order to install it if we choose to do so. At the other intersection of Hickory Log Drive, there is not a warrant now, as I stated. It is also not warranted in the future, however, according to our study, Atkins does, they do, trying to think of the word, they have proposed that we do install the light for safety reasons. So we do have a study that states that we should, so it's not warranted, but the Atkins study does say that we should do the light at that location. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Sorry if I confused you, I could tell in your face it was a little confusing.
It's confusing.
Smith?
So, that's great news, thank you.
You're welcome.
Finally. What would be the next steps to get the light at Hickory Log?
We are good to go as soon as you would like to move forward. I will state that GDOT has stated that they do not want us to put a light there, but they have no control, so.
I could list all the things I don't want GDOT to do. It would be a fun game.
So with that said, we can move forward as soon as his council would like.
Okay. How does the funding work? I know Grand Reserve has already put in seventy-five thousand.
So I believe that.
What I was gonna say is what we'd probably do is price out the project and bring the project back to council to approve as a contract. And that would include the funding sources and all that at the same time.
Okay. Do you need anything else tonight to do that?
No, we don't need to, we don't need a vote to do that.
So we can consider that in the works?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll talk to Mr. Pepper to find out if we want to just do a task order or if we want to put an RFP out.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Do you, I can explain the process for the next step for GDOT as well, if you would like, for the other signal. So as I stated, the next step would be to get a traffic signal permit from GDOT. I'm not sure how long that process would be. I would assume if they've already approved the warrant study that it would be pretty fast. We do want to get this light installed prior to 2025, probably sooner rather than later. There may be possibility of funding from GDOT on that light, however, GDOT funding takes a whole lot longer and they require a whole lot more engineering studies that go along with it. So more than likely, if we want the light, we're gonna have to pay for it. Just so you're aware.
How soon could we get that light?
I'm sorry?
How soon could we get the light at Reservoir and Reinhardt?
As soon as GDOT approves the warrant study and we can get the permit, we'll be able to move forward with engineering.
Okay.
Is it anticipated to go ahead and apply for that permit now?
Yes, as soon as we get those comments back from Atkins to submit to GDOT, I imagine that it'll be pretty quick.
Thank you.
So based on our history with GDOT, how long between today?
how how long between today and installation of that light, would you guess it might take?
You may still be on council, Mr. Tolan.
We won't, we won't be alive.
Yeah. I I was gonna say that.
We don't know. That's an okay answer.
Just just based on our experience, like with the red speed cameras, we've got to go through the electrical side, making sure we have everything that's there, making sure we have the equipment and the poles in place, you know, I don't know, there's backlog on those, I mean, like there are on certain things. So I don't know that we could give you a date.
Be great if it could be done before the start of the next school.
I think that that would be ambitious, but it's, I wouldn't say it's completely out of the realm of possibilities.
Ms. Oh, sorry.
And then the other, I just had a question. In the Atkins report, it mentioned three hundred and ninety thousand dollars for a traffic signal. Is that, is that what our experience has been in terms of the cost?
Since I've been here, I don't think that the city has installed a lot, so I don't have a pricing on that. But I would imagine that that's pretty close to correct because they are very in tune with that sort of thing, so. I I think that if, I don't know how much you read into it, but they actually, there was a better condition of putting a roundabout at Tinsley Middle School. However, that was millions of dollars versus the three hundred and seventy thousand, so.
Yeah, yeah, like three million and some change, I think, for double lanes.
I was recently talking to a to another city that installed a light after some issues, but they wound up having to to install one and paying for it. I think it was five hundred thousand dollars for a traffic light, a single traffic light, but.
In the wrong business.
So they're not, they're not cheap.
So it's two different timelines because we're in control of the Hickory Log light, correct?
Yes, correct.
And we'll get more information on the GDOT and talk to them about funding and then see how long it would be if we go with their funding.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Let's clear you up. Council support for this and we appreciate expediting in any way possible. So item F, Discussion of Harmon Park Update. Ms. Watson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So as you may recall, we had a concept study done by Harmon, I mean, not Harmon, Atkins, for Harmon Park to include the mini pitch for the Atlanta United grant that we got. So we have asked that Atkins supply proposal for full design services for construction documents and then construction management. I'm hoping to have that to you at the next meeting, but I wanted to kind of update you on what we have talked about in the Harmon Park. Additional sidewalks along the river, additional parking utilizing the recently acquired land, a half-court basketball court, a small gazebo, resurfacing of the existing asphalt, tiered seating in the mini pitch area, stormwater improvements. As you know, the mini pitch is, should be completed by April twenty twenty-two per our agreement with the grant. So time is of the essence, which is why we are coming to you tonight to let you know about the upgrades that Atkins will be submitting a proposal for that you'll see at the next meeting. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Did you say sidewalks along the river?
Well, sidewalks along the parking and drive area. It will be within, outside of the buffer, so it'll be, it won't be right on the river.
Right.
But it'll be on the side so that when we continue the trail on that side, it'll be easily easily continued.
Okay.
Exciting. Further questions?
Just wanted to applaud staff for everything you guys have done so far. This is really morphed into a really special place and I can't wait to see it be fully developed.
Agree. Very exciting.
Mr. Mayor, I would throw in that the new Arts Committee, one of their first initiatives that they want to do is include public art at Harmon. And they're working on setting up a meeting with city staff to figure out what their first project can be, to have it be at Harmon.
Sounds great. Awesome.
We did discuss it, but I don't know that we came up with any ideas yet, but it will be something we'll continue.
They'll have the ideas, don't worry.
Plenty of ideas, so. I think it's an ideal location, so it's exciting, so thank you. So new business, we have a couple of staff reports from Mr. Patton for upcoming cases.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, council members. The first item is in regards to annexation and zoning of two-point-two acres that is totally contained within Riverstone. It's totally contained within property the Board of Education bought. This two acres is an island of unincorporated Cherokee County. Plan development, mixed uses, zoning all around it. You know, currently, the property is vacant, undeveloped, fallow, if you will. There's really not a lot to say from a technical standpoint. I think I've addressed the majority of the highlights for a technical report. This will be a public hearing on September the second. You want me to go ahead and move on to the next one?
Go ahead, item B.
Uh, the other staff report involves annexation and zoning for a hundred and seventy-seven acres off of Sam Nelson Road. This is the proposed Polcap Mountain Winery Resort Project. We have received an email from Atlanta Regional Commission in which they have indicated that this is not a full DRI review process. It is a notification-only letter. This is scheduled to go to a public hearing September the second. There were some concerns expressed that Cherokee County could force a DRI process. ARC staff emphatically indicated that that is not the case, that it is an ARC decision. City staff has had conversations with the county staff. They are presenting this to the Board of Commissioners. The county staff has already raised two issues relative to roads, transportation, access. Hopefully, we will get something in writing through the county attorney's office in regards to their position with this. Staff can tell you the property, for the most part, is forested. The property owner does have a communication tower that is in existence on the subject property. Adjacent zoning for the property to the north is agriculture, to the west is agriculture, unincorporated Cherokee County. To the south and to the east is a city of Canton property, planned development, mixed use. They are proposing two hundred and twenty-two total units with this project. Retail, about seventy acres or so of the hundred and seventy-seven acres total will be agriculture, open space. They will have to submit a conditional use permit application as well as a master plan application prior to any land disturbance permits being issued. If city council is inclined to annex and approve zoning, they are requesting planned development mixed use because it does contain residential uses in form of apartments, townhomes. There is retail associated with it. I'm here to answer any questions about either one of these upcoming cases. But the public hearings for these two cases will be on September the second.
Okay. I think that's just a report on this this time and we'll discuss them next meeting, I think, so.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members.
Thank you, Mr. Patton. So item C, Discussion of Possible Action on Livable Centers Initiative, twenty-twenty-one application. Ms. Watson.
Thank you, Mayor. So currently, the Atlanta Regional Commission is accepting applications for the Livable Centers Initiative for preliminary engineering. I've discussed it with Mr. Peppers and Mr. Engerman. We've decided that we would like to propose to apply for the project in order to get funding for the design of the pedestrian corridor from downtown to the mill. We would be asking for a twenty percent match on the engineering funds. I have on there that I estimate it'll cost a hundred thousand dollars for the engineering. Don't think it'll be anywhere near that high. I just kind of wanted to give you an estimate. And like I said, we would only be required to put up that twenty percent. I am asking for action tonight because the application is due August twenty-seventh. So I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. I think it's a great initiative and we've used LCI funds before for our downtown master plan and certainly this this corridor from downtown to the mill is, I think, an excellent application, uh, uh, application for those those funds, but.
I was just gonna say, it's amazing. We've been talking about wanting to do it and it's part of the roadmap, so. And it's a game changer to connect the mill and downtown and make it all one thing for our visitors and residents, so, thanks.
Can we go ahead and make a motion if there's no more discussion?
Sure.
I move. To submit LCI application for twenty-twenty-one as well as a resolution to support for a twenty percent match, not to exceed twenty thousand dollars. Is that fair, Mr. Don?
Second.
So Mr. Tolan has moved. We have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. All members voted for the motion. Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Watson, for taking that initiative. Item D, Discussion of Awarding the Downtown Parking Deck Construction Contract to Astra Group LLC in the amount of two million nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars and Special Inspections Proposal from ECS in the amount of eighteen thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars. Ms. Watson.
Thank you. So we put the parking deck construction documents out for bid. We received three bids back. The lowest bid was two million nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, Astra Group LLC. We also, as part of this construction, will be required to have special inspections completed for material testing. We received three quotes for those services and with the low bidder being, or not low bidder, low quote being ESC in the amount of eighteen thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars. I'll be asking for approval of both of those contracts at the September second meeting. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
So this this, the bids did come back a little higher than anticipated. Is is there a reason for that or just? I I'm sure, I know construction costs and materials are up, so.
Yeah, um, material costs are up. I'm hearing a lot of steel costs are up and concrete is difficult to obtain. And so I imagine that would be the reason why the the costs are so much higher. I I didn't get a answer from Astra or any of the other groups on why their costs were higher than than we were proposing. I do know that our engineer did not add any cost for COVID-related issues. He did make some phone calls to precasters and didn't have, didn't feel like that the prices were up from the preclass side. So it may just be a a safety net for these contractors in case something happens again.
Okay, thank you. Further questions, comments? Item E, Discussion of Georgia Power Proposal for Electric Vehicle Charging Stations for the Downtown Parking Deck, not to exceed fifty thousand dollars.
Yes, so we received a proposal from Georgia Power and it was, on it were three different quotes for different types of charging stations. We staff looked at three different ones and we decided to eliminate the highest-cost one. With this being our first application, we felt maybe we needed one that was, figure out if we liked it before we spent so much money on it. So we narrowed it down to the two, the Clipper Creek, which does not have any network capabilities. It basically is just a charging station. You can add network capabilities on at a later date if you decide you want to, but they do not come with it. That one comes in at the cost of nineteen thousand seven hundred and forty-three dollars. That includes a five-year warranty. And then the EDRV in the amount of forty-nine thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. And those do have the ability for smart charging. You can charge if you wanted to and there is monitoring included with that. It also includes a five-year warranty. I would point out that for both of these, they are not dual-charging stations, so there would be a charger for each spot. And this is for ten charging stations. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
So when you say charge for, are you talking about charge for the services to the consumer for using the stations?
Yes, so the the EDRV, the one that's forty-nine thousand, would give us the capability to charge if in the future we decided to charge. For now, I believe that we've decided we'll keep them free. But it does give us that capability in the future.
My preference would be to keep them free, but. Further discussion, comments?
Yes, and that that EDRV will allow us to monitor their usage. That's the one drawback to the the lower-cost one is that we wouldn't be able to monitor how much they're being used.
Okay.
At the September meeting is when I'll be asking for action on on moving forward with this item.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, will I have to abstain because I own an electric vehicle?
That's up to you. Item F, Discussion of Georgia Power Proposal for Solar Array for the Downtown Parking Structure, not to exceed three hundred and eleven thousand seven hundred and eight dollars. Ms. Watson.
Thank you, Mayor. So this item, Georgia Power has submitted another proposal for solar array on top of the deck. I believe, do you have a picture of that? There we go. That that's the schematic that Clark Patterson has created for us showing the solar location. Georgia Power submitted this proposal and the price for the thirty-day price hold, which expires on September eighth, is three hundred and eleven thousand seven hundred and eight dollars. They do have a hold. I'm sorry. They do have a expiration date on this quote due to the increasing price of steel. And this system is eighty kilowatts. It will power the entire deck and part of city hall as well. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
We previously discussed a a total canopy for that.
Yeah, so Georgia Power submitted a quote for the entire canopy and it was in to the tune of, what, three million dollars? No, a million, one point three, three million dollars for the entire canopy to be covered.
There was a little discommunication where we said we wanted the lawyer to be able to offset some of the energy in downtown city hall. So they went and did some renderings of the solar array covering the whole deck. Well, then they come back to us and say, that's a three-hundred KJ solar panel, way over here. We'd actually be selling energy back to the power company. That's inefficient. That's a long-term investment.
Okay.
We backed it down to what the city hall was, was tiny, but city hall.
Okay, so this is what Georgia Powers recommend. Okay, thank you. That explains it, so. This is McGree.
Will this array allow us to use the charging stations?
Yes, so the charging stations will actually be underneath of the solar panels. So, but it it will have no, they will not counteract each other, I guess. If I'm understanding your question. So, but it, it will have no, um, they will not counteract each other, I guess, if I'm understanding your question correctly.
Well, I just wanted to, to see if the energy from the solar panels would be energy that, you know, would offset the cost of residents using the charging stations so that we could keep the charging stations free.
Um. Yeah, it makes us not have to pay for that.
That, that was kind of the principle to help offset those charges, plus some city hall, but to answer your question, they're not directly tied to each other.
Mm-hmm.
It's six one half dozen.
Gotcha, thanks.
Any further?
I did have a question. After you, Mr. Tolan.
So, I really hadn't thought about this till just now, but you know, given that we're starting out not charging this, charging citizens, residents, whoever visits our city for charging, Mr. Estes, Mr. Estes may be able to answer this better than anybody. Is it expensive to charge a car if you've charged it at your house? I mean, did you notice that on your, did you notice that on your?
Um, I mean, if you do the math, you kind of like s- save, uh i- it's nominal. I mean, it's not, it wouldn't bankrupt the city or even, you know, it's nice to have the offset there, but it, but it is a kind of a pain in the butt, like when I go to stock and, you know, if I'm running low, I'm like, geez, I gotta pay like buck and a quarter an hour for this stuff, you know, it's just a pain.
Oh, is that what it is, a buck and a quarter an hour?
Yeah, it's very nominal.
Okay.
Yeah.
In Woodstock.
It's not worth a follow-up.
Yeah, it's not, it, it's not, you know, twenty dollars for an hour or something.
Ms. Carlin?
Ms. Watson, you mentioned the high price of steel in the last presentation. What uh, what is the, you know, the idea of what the price of steel is percentage-wise of this project? What? If steel prices were to go down, and looking at the futures market, it looks like they should be going down, does it make sense to buy now or does it make sense to wait for it to go down?
The parking deck doesn't. If it has steel in it, it's very minimal. Um, it's all precast, so it's rebar and concrete. Um, and the foundations don't have any steel in it. Um, that's just one thing that we've heard from contractors is that steel is going up. Um, that is something that Georgia Power, that's the reason why our original quote from Georgia Power back, what, four months ago, was two hundred and fifty thousand? Now it's three eleven. Um, and, and as you can see from the quote, they actually gave us a fifteen-day quote that was um, I think twenty thousand dollars less.
Two ninety-nine, I think.
That may be off, but anyways, they're uh, it, it may go down in Georgia Pow- Powers' price. I'm not sure if they would cut us a deal if, if in, because it'll be, you know, seven months before they actually start constructing the solar panel, so.
The other thing that's important about the project and the timing is we tried to, we tried to stage it between October and May and call that impacts the downtown during the winter nights for construction, and the hope is to have it completed before we start up all of our bigger events leading into spring and summer next year.
Gotcha.
If the futures market is to be believed, which is volatile as it is, maybe worthwhile trying to negotiate down some if they know it might be cheaper down the road, there's a possibility. If it, if it makes an impact at all, and it sounds like it may not make an impact as far as steel goes, uh since we're not constructing it out of that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Further discussion? Okay, thank you, Ms. Watson.
Thank you.
Mr. Peppers?
All I have is uh an email that I sent out to you earlier today with a copy of a purchase and sale agreement um on the property that we have at the Bluffs uh that we have a letter of intent to purchase. Um, and basically, this kickstarts um our period by the time we would need to get surveys done and all of that for a potential purchase. Um, there was a question, the city attorney asked about um the, the need to maybe look at the specific paragraph in there about um the representations from the property owner to the seller. Um, what we, or to, to the buyer, what we would probably do is suggest that um inherent mentions one employee that we would just change that to sellers, so that gives us the ability to talk to all the various parties that are involved and see what knowledge they might have, is it? But if council were willing to put this on the agenda for a vote, it would allow us to start moving forward with that process.
And this just kickstarts a, is it ninety day?
Sixty.
Sixty days?
Sixty days.
Did it change, okay.
This is what they're going with, almost sixty days.
So this is the real. Yeah, so this is the contract, so. Mr. Estes, did you have a question?
I was just gonna say that the, the request is put it on, amend the agenda to.
To add it to the agenda and then.
Yeah, I, I, I don't have any issues, and you, and you would prefer to have the amendment to the language to read sellers.
Instead of one particular name.
Okay, got it. Fair, yeah, yeah, you guys will.
We need two motions, one to add it, add the item to the agenda and the second one to approve the contract.
Take action. Uh, I, since we, you know, did have a public meeting with, with the, the letter of intent and everything, I'd, I'd make a motion to amend the agenda to add this discussion um for the, to, to have the city manager sign the um purchase agreement.
Second.
Motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All members voted for the motion?
A motion to approve, um, or a motion to allow the city manager to execute the T P A Bluffs agreement.
Second.
A motion and a second, further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Tom, in?
I move to allow the city manager to execute the contract, yes, with T P A Bluffs with changes approved by the city attorney.
Second.
She said confidently.
So we have the amended motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All members voted for the motion.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. We had no council introduced items at the beginning, but just double check. We've got uh three quick items. Uh, number one is our appointments to the Sustainability Board, and um we have for Ward One, Sandy McGrew appointed John Johnson, Joellen Wilson appointed Jaren Touche. Ward Two, Will Carlin appointed Roy Taylor, Sean Tolan appointed Jane Shellnut, and in Ward Three, Mr. Estes is waiting to hear back from his appointment, and we will make that appointment as soon as he hears back from them, and Ms. Schmidt appointed Blake Ellett. Are those appointments correct? Um, so we'll make those appointment, and uh I would like to uh name Blake Ellett as the interim chair pending his acceptance of that responsibility. If I hear back from Ms. Schmidt that he, he is not up for that task, we will assign another interim chair until the board can uh uh elect its own chair, so. Look forward to getting that, that board up and going, so. I'd also like to extend my congratulations to uh our three um candidates who qualified for upcoming election and with no opposition, so I'd like to congratulate them. Uh, Ward One, Ms. McGrew, and Ward Two, Mr. Carlin, so I look forward to continue to, to work with you guys and excited to be welcoming uh in Ward Three, Mr. Dwayne Waterman uh to, to the council in January, so. Congratulations to all, so. And then just the last item, uh I had received a call from Commissioner Steve West uh today um stating that he felt pretty good about, he thought that they may have a solution for the uh county services parking deck in downtown Canton. They were waiting to hear back some numbers and from some, some people, but um he felt pretty good about it and um I look forward to discussing that in our meeting with the, the county and the other um parties on Monday at the Bluffs. So uh that was kind of positive news, so we, we look, hoping, hoping that there's some good outcome there, so. Um, people are working to try to, try to have a better outcome there, so we're excited to hopefully have a, a good outcome there, so. Uh, and I would also like to thank Mr. Carlin, Mr. Tolan for attending the citizens' meeting, I think, last Sunday, so, and Mr. Mr. Ms. McGruder's home, so. That's all I have. Uh, we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. Well, a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Adjourn, thank you.